Call the meeting to order, please. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting for Thursday, October 18, 2018. The time is 7:00 PM. Please call the roll.
President Salles.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Trustee Lumsden.
Here.
Trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Sutteby.
Here.
Trustee Peters.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Mars.
Here.
Also present Village Clerk Haley, and we are hoping for the arrival of Trustee Jiza shortly.
We hope so, yeah. If you'll please join us for the pledge.
Our pledges to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to everyone who is here with us this evening and those of you watching at home. If you are here with us tonight and you would like to make a comment to the board at any point, I just ask that you be recognized by the President and that you make your comments from the podium so that folks at home can hear and see what you have to say. First up this evening is a very happy occasion. We have a presentation by Chief Weitzel of some of our recent police personnel accomplishments. Chief Weitzel.
Good morning. Good evening, President Salles, Trustees and Manager Francis. I have a little presentation to go over tonight with the board on some of the accomplishments the officers have received recently and some of the advantages that they've taken of what the village provides for them. So up first, I'm going to do John Cairo if you stand next to me. John is our permanent midnight sergeant. That's probably why you don't see him much. Most residents don't see him. I mean, I'm sure as soon as he can get off midnight, he will. But unfortunately, by seniority, he's going to be on there for a little bit. So John has been with us since 2013. What I wanted the board to know is that recently John graduated from Lewis University in Rome with his master's degree in criminal justice. He also got his undergraduate degree from Lewis University. And what's really important about that is this board and the village manager have always been very supportive of education reimbursement, and John has taken full advantage of that. He got his undergraduate degree and his graduate degree with the help of the village's tuition reimbursement program. For about the last three to three and a half years, John went to work the midnight shift and went to school during the day and raised a family. I'll have John introduce his wife and children when he comes up to the podium. John is a resident of Riverside. He lives here. And he's a future leader. He's a leader as a first-line supervisor for the midnight shift, but I can assure this board, as you see us older officers move on, Frank Lyra over there, too, we have people coming up in the department that are going to be ready to serve in leadership positions, whatever those leadership positions are. And I can assure that these board members, even if you're not on the board anymore and you're a resident of the town, you see Sergeant John Cairo will be in a leadership position higher than sergeant in the future. So I'm going to step aside and John's going to talk a little bit about his college and he can answer any questions the board may have.
I just want to thank the board, the residents, everybody that was involved with this program. It was outstanding. I know a few of our officers are actually taking advantage of it. Why see Greenewald? He got his degree through Lewis as well, his graduate degree. And it does so much just broaden your horizons outside of police work. I mean, that's a big thing for us. You get locked into this, you know, law enforcement, law enforcement, law enforcement, but it's nice just conversing with people that are outside of the program. I had firefighters in the program, I had nurses, I had emergency technicians from other people, I had people who run major scenes and that's their only job, emergency management. So it was just nice to be able to talk to these people and get perspective outside of law enforcement to broaden those horizons. I'm hoping more of our officers take advantage of this in the future, which I know some are now, because it does everything besides, it helps us benefit the village as well as the police department in helping our officers move up and, you know, put themselves in the best position they can with the police department. I went to school and, like the chief said, it was a little challenging. I was raising a family at the same time, my beautiful wife, Ann, my son Patrick, and my son Joseph, who was born about a month and a half ago. It's hard. You know, the school pulls you away from family, pulls you away from friends, pulls you away from a lot of the things that, you know, you want to enjoy outside of it, but it's well worth it in the end. So I just want to thank the board, I want to thank the police department, the chief, for allowing me to do this and allowing me to move forward with my education and put myself and my family and hopefully the village in a better position because of my education. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant.
I will share with the village manager, John Cairo's research paper. If she has about, if she ever wants to fall asleep, you have to read her 50 pages of her research paper. But I will do that. Next up is Brian Greenewald. Brian seems to be up here all the time either for explorers or accomplishments. He's an officer in charge. He's been with us since 2007. I traveled to Springfield recently with Brian to receive a Mad Heroes Award. He probably got the award for the sixth time, fifth. So the executive director, Sam Kanzaneri, said there's only seven officers in the state of Illinois that have received that Mad Heroes Award to the tune of what Brian Greenewald has done. In fact, he's well accomplished in impaired driving when it comes to drunk driving and drugs driving, which is becoming more and more prevalent these days, either illegal drug driving or prescription drug driving. So Brian received the Mad Heroes Award at a banquet, like I said, in Springfield. There were about 30 other police officers throughout the state there. Most of them were from central and southern Illinois. There were only a few from the metropolitan Chicago area, including Chicago Police Department. Brian has made over 600 DUI arrests in his career, but what even, what is more impressive to me as chief is he has over a 90% conviction rate, and that would either be by conviction at trial or by a plea of guilty before the trial, because that indicates that the individual is intoxicated and that your report writing is correct and that the state's attorney's office is fully prosecuting the cases. So I'm going to step aside and have Brian speak, but you know him from his explorers, obviously, but he's also, he's really a leader in impaired driving in Illinois. And when he accepted his award in Springfield, the entire audience stood up and acknowledged him, which didn't happen for the other officers there. So in his field, he's very well-known. Brian?
I, too, want to thank the board. Impaired driving has been a focus of this police department ever since I started, and it's sort of been my niche in law enforcement. So without the chief's approval and without the boards allowing us to go to training and to provide training and do all the things that we're able to do to be a forefront in that field, I wouldn't be doing what I'm doing now. So thank you very much. Thank you to the chief for, again, always supporting us, and I really do appreciate it.
I will also say Officer Greenewald is on permanent midnights, and he's a rare bird
because he volunteers every year for the last nine years. So I think that speaks volumes, too. So beside me is Officer Joseph Mahana. He's been with us since 2013. Joe was kind of taken under his wings by Officer Greenewald for impaired driving, and he recently just received a designation through the International Association of Chiefs of Police as a DRE officer, which is a drug recognition expert. In Illinois, there's only 115 such officers in the entire state. The Village of Riverside has two, Brian Greenewald and Joseph Mahana. And when I came into work this morning at 6:30 in the morning, Joe had somebody under arrest for drug driving who was driving on three wheels last night, was probably involved in an accident in another suburb, and we just happened to catch him. But the individual was extremely impaired under the combination of alcohol and Xanax. And in order to prosecute that in the Cook County court system, you must be a DRE officer. You must be an expert in drug recognition, and you have to know how to administer that because it's totally different than drunk driving. There's a different set of standards, and the officers have to be certified to testify in court as an expert witness, which Brian Greenewald and Joe Mahana are. Your family is here tonight, correct? So when Joe comes up, you can introduce them. But he's an officer that's aggressive, wants to be with us. Joe came to us from, he came from us from a college police department in Indiana when he started with us. So he came to us with law enforcement experience. But I'm really proud to have him as one of my officers, and I'm proud to have him as a DRE officer when the state is, only has 115. It takes a lot of dedication, because with a DRE officer, you have to know pharmacology and you have to know math, and a lot of police officers don't want to know either. So it takes a lot of, it takes a lot of commitment. So I'll put aside, and Joe, you can speak.
Great. Thanks, chief. Just want to say thank you to the village, thank you to the chief. This training that was provided to me was very long and strenuous. Thank you to my wife and my son. I was gone for weeks at a time. It was a two-week course. I was in Rockford the whole time. And every weekend, I was gone from the house doing training in order to get this certification for roughly three, four months. So I just want to thank them, thank the board, thank the chief.
Thank you. And last, but certainly not least, is Officer Michael Panic. And I'm happy Mike could come up today because he's returned from his military deployment. So Mike returned recently from his deployment in Africa. And in 2016, I went and saw him receive his promotion in the Navy to chief petty officer. I was extremely impressed by the military bearing, and I was extremely impressed by that ceremony, and I was extremely impressed by his peers and what they thought of him in his military life. So he was deployed to Africa, and I'm probably going to screw this up so he can speak a little bit, but in, I believe his first deployment was in July, was in, was it Djibouti?
Djibouti.
Okay. I screwed that up, right? And then you were reappointed, reassigned to the U.S. Embassy in Kampala? And I'll have him speak a little bit more about that, but I'm so honored to have an officer who is active military duty. This village has supported it from day one. The village manager has supported it from day one. You know this board has from day one. It's common in law enforcement that we're hiring military veterans to come in. The state of Illinois actually gives preference points to active military duty or military individuals that have got out of the military service and with honorable discharge. And Mike has many friends in the military that are also serving law enforcement positions. But I do believe in this deployment, you were the only Illinois officer. Is that correct?
Correct.
So he told me he enjoyed the people of Africa immensely, but he was ready to get back. But I think he can tell you, he absolutely enjoyed his deployment to Africa, so I'll let him speak.
Good evening. Thank you, chief. Yeah, so I was in, I originally went to Djibouti, but that wasn't my main, my end game. My end game was going down to Uganda to the U.S. Embassy and working as a liaison officer, where I was a senior enlisted guy working there with another Navy officer. It was two of us as a team, and our job was to coordinate troops from Djibouti coming down to Uganda and training the local military, the Ugandan People's Defense Force. Our main mission is the African mission in Somalia. There's al-Shabaab terrorists over there, and Kenya, Ethiopia, and Uganda are helping them fight that battle. So that's, our job was to help train them and equip them so they can go do it, and that was my main focus. It was a unique position. It's not a typical military deployment. It was an easy job, you know, not very much stress, but it was hard to deal with, having so much fun and being away from my family. So it was, it was a wonderful, wonderful place. East Africa is beautiful, the people are wonderful. I got to get, I had a lot of experiences out there that I absolutely enjoyed, and I wish they could have been out there with me to do it because it was a very life-changing experience, and I'm glad to be back, and I'm even grateful to be back in uniform because this is a job I truly love. It's an honor, and I'm very grateful for the support I've had from the department and the village and my family. My wife's not here, but she had the deployment for kids. I left a four-month-old, so she's the one that had the brunt of it, and she did an outstanding job. I wish she was here, but we're not dragging four kids in a bedtime on her, so I apologize for that, but she is, she's a saint, and she did a wonderful job, and I'm really proud of her, so thank you.
I will say, if you can have any questions for it, you can certainly ask. Well, I hope Mike doesn't mind me saying that you may know that one of his first positions in the Navy was...
In San Diego.
Yes. And he trained dolphins to mine our ports for attacks against our ships. So I remember interviewing him during our, when he applied for the job here, the police and fire commissioner said, "What is it you do? You train dolphins?" And, yeah, and that was one of his assignments, was to train dolphins to go into our ports and to look for explosives that would harm our military. And they were very impressed by his background, and it was just one of the most unusual statements that was made in the hiring process I think I've ever heard. But if any of you have questions, feel free to ask. If not, that's fine.
I guess I would just like to say that, obviously, we're very proud of all of you, and I think it's a good example of the extraordinary lengths that you go to beyond the call of duty to better yourself, and that all endures to the benefit of our residents. So we're extremely proud of you. We thank the families who make it possible to provide the support that you need to do this incredibly difficult work, but just know that we always will have your back. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. And welcome home, Officer Panic.
Thank you.
It's an inspiring group of men. Would anyone like to address the board? Yes, sir, please.
Do you want to hold public comment? My comment is on resolution on 8B. Would you like me to hold it till then, or would you want to do it now?
It's entirely up to you, sir. You can do it now. If you want to wait till we get to that item, you're welcome to do it then.
Okay, I'd prefer to wait till we get to that item.
Absolutely. That's perfectly fine. Anyone else at this point? Yes, sir, please.
Peter Schonman, 235 Maplewood Road. I just wanted to thank the board and the village manager, and also Orion Gailey from Burke Engineering for listening to our concerns. I wrote him a letter concerning the Groveland levee and some of the modeling discrepancies that we believe are very pertinent. It's over a foot difference in the modeling that they presented and what was actually surveyed specifically for the project in 2009. And, you know, if you don't mind, I could illustrate that one more time. Because what's at stake is whether or not the base flood elevation, which is a very important regulation for the U.S. Army Corps and FEMA to abide by, also for flood insurance, mandatory flood insurance. In this neighborhood, the 1978 survey has stated that it's 15.3 feet. And that was the elevation which was used by the Army Corps to demonstrate their 100-year flood. However, in 2009, the Illinois Department of Natural Resources was hired specifically to survey the Des Plaines River for the upcoming Groveland project, and they cited the new elevation 40 years later. You can imagine the settlement. Falls on the bottom of the river, raises the water table. So, yeah, that is now 616.39. And why that's important, why that's so important, is because the Army Corps has to abide by their set of regulations, which requires three feet of freeboard. So if they're going off of the old elevation of 615.3, and they can build three feet of freeboard off of that, you know, that sounds great. However, if they're wrong about the actual base flood elevation, which according to the IDNR survey is a foot higher, that means freeboard has to be a foot higher, which means not only would the levee not be accredited if they only built to 618, but it would also mean that there'd be a new FEMA map for everyone in Riverside. Whereas instead of the 615 elevation coming to this contour, right, like they have in the official FEMA map, it would go, it would go beyond that. So we would have new residences. You know, I don't know what a foot higher an elevation is going to look like, but it's going to touch different lots. And so I think it's really important for residents to recognize that that's what's at stake. And I also have a question for our village attorney, Michael Mars. I know incrementally, we're working toward, or the village is working toward, maybe having this deal go forward. Today, you're going to be voting on a resolution which has words in it like eminent domain is part of what's on the table. Are there any caveats to the project partnership, whereas if it's discovered that the geotechnical specs of the project are off by a foot, can the village back out of the project? For example, if there's going to be a design phase, if there's discovery during the design phase, would the village be able to back out of the deal?
Let me, Mr. Mars, let me intervene just a second. The project partnership agreement is still being negotiated.
Okay.
That's a very, that's a very fair question that you're asking.
Right.
But I would ask that you, that you wait until we actually know what the final terms of that agreement are going to be, because Mr. Mars really can't answer that until we know what the final terms are going to be.
Right. I guess part of why I'm here is to raise that concern, because, you know, if you're making a deal, it'd be good to have some outs, especially if you're not getting what you were being told you're going to get.
I can assure you that our attorneys are very conscious of that and have our best interests at heart.
Very well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else? Okay, moving on then to reports of village officers. I have no report this evening. Manager Francis?
I do not have a report.
Next up is the approval of the consent agenda. On the agenda this evening, approve the voucher list of bills for October 18, 2018. Approve the village board of trustee regular meeting minutes, October 4, 2018. File and review the following: Landscape Advisory Commission meeting minutes, September 11; Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes, August 22; Preservation Commission meeting minutes, August 9 and September 26; Community Development Department, August monthly report; the Finance Department, August monthly report; the Fire Department, August monthly report; and the Police Department, August monthly report; and the Police Department quarterly report for the third quarter. Also on the agenda, a resolution approving a cable television franchise agreement by and between the Village of Riverside and Comcast; a motion to approve a supplemental agreement regarding PEG capital fees between the Village of Riverside and Comcast; and a resolution of the Village of Riverside authorizing the village manager to issue a purchase order to Client First Consulting Group LLC for additional information technology services in the amount of $30,000 for 2018. Did you have something else to mention? No. Does anyone need any of these items removed for discussion? Hearing non-honest asked for a motion in a second to approve by Ms. Peters.
I second.
By Mr. Ballerine. Please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Sutteby.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. Any liaison reports this evening? Yes, sir, please.
Not exactly the liaison report, but it's something I'd like to say. This is a response to an opinion piece that was put in the landmark from a gentleman named Brent McNeil. It was an open letter to our police chief. And I wanted to respond to him if I could. You know, "Driving through a red light at any speed is completely unacceptable." His thought process that if you slow down enough, it's safe. It's not. It's a stoplight. You need to stop. And questioning the integrity of our police, our village staff is completely inappropriate, especially the police department that has demonstrated time and time again that their reputation is beyond approach. The village board made this decision regarding this policy matter and directed staff to investigate opportunities relating to policing within Riverside. This is a decision that good people with good intentions can have opposing opinions, but is not acceptable to make inappropriate innuendos about our chief's intentions. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Anyone else? Next up are ordinances and resolutions. And first up is an ordinance amending the text of the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance relative to small wireless facilities. Director Act.
Thank you. As you may recall, the state enacted the Small Wireless Facilities Deployment Act back in April, and before you in July was some new regulations that were added to our municipal code in implementing that act as we are required to do. In addition to that, there was some zoning regulations that needed to be addressed, so we have taken that through the public hearing process. Small cell applications in the public right-of-way are exempt from any zoning review. However, outside of the village right-of-way, we have the right to regulate them. The act does say that any small cells on private property that are in exclusively commercial or industrial zoning districts should be considered permitted uses, and outside of that, thankfully in Riverside, we don't have any of those. So the proposed amendment that went before the Planning and Zoning Commission is before you now, has all small cell wireless facilities as special uses in all of our zoning districts. So this would allow the Planning and Zoning Commission to make any recommendations to you regarding any additional standards or conditions they would like applied to any installation on private property, and so we can enact those kinds of conditions on it. It would become the village board for approval. The text amendment also includes some additional definitions and some clarifications on the difference between other wireless facilities and a small cell wireless facility. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted their public hearing in September and reluctantly voted 7-0 to recommend approval of the proposed amendments. They did have some concerns about placement and asked if the design standards could address locations within the right-of-way, as opposed to them really only having any discretion on location on private property. And so that's something that the village attorney is going to be looking into us being able to address. Additionally, the Preservation Commission did review this. All proposed zoning text amendments have to go before the Preservation Commission for comment on the effect of the proposed amendment on our historic landmark designation or the general plan of Riverside. The Preservation Commission stated in their meeting that they believe that small cell wireless facilities in front yards or in our parkways or our triangle parks could have a detrimental impact on our national landmark designation, and therefore they are recommending to the village board that the Preservation Commission be able to review any small cell wireless facility within the village's national landmark designation, not just those on locally designated landmark properties, as is currently written in our regulations. So you have an ordinance before you that has the zoning amendments. Village attorney or I can answer any questions that you have related to the Preservation Commission's comments.
Does this include the language that was discussed at the Preservation?
That would go in the municipal code section, so that's something that can be addressed at a separate time when we have, I think, the design standards finalized to come before you.
Before we start, let's get a motion on the floor first. I ask for a motion to approve an ordinance amending the text of the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance relative to small wireless facilities. I'll make that motion.
Mr. Pollak.
I'll second.
Mr. Lumsden. Now, conversation, please. Trustee.
How does, how does all of that revolve around the letter that just came out from your law firm, what, two days ago, three days ago?
About the FCC regulations?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're still assessing the impacts of those. It's like 100 pages long, and it's going to require some revisions to your ordinance because they're changing the game again. But how it kind of fits, this whole idea that was raised at the Preservation Commission, and it also kind of fits in with some comments that Commissioner Hannan made at the PCC meeting about these new poles in the parkway. So Commissioner Hannan was saying, well, what, you know, our property lines in some cases are, go pretty far into what most people would regard as the yard, right? They go past the sidewalks, or in a lot of communities, you know, the parkway is the sidewalk to the street. And he said, "Well, what if they wanted to put one on that house side of the sidewalk? What would we do?" And I hadn't really thought about that before. There's not a particular reason that the telecommunications company would do it, but conceivably they could. And then, and then I heard that Historic Preservation had talked about, you know, the... And then, and then I heard that Historic Preservation had talked about, you know, the, the importance of the parkways and, and additional review on their part by this. And, and so I went back and I looked at the ordinance, the state law, and our ordinance. And, and I do think that Riverside is very uniquely situated based on its, its historic landmark status. And kind of alone among all the clients I've worked with on the small cell stuff, I think you guys can, can add additional controls that aren't available to, to other communities to protect that status. And so I think, I, I like the idea, if the board does, of, of bringing back additional amendments. And this doesn't really affect what we're doing tonight, because this is out, the stuff we're talking about is outside the zoning code. But bringing back some additional amendments that, that will give Historic Preservation the ability to review these and exert additional controls over what these look like in our parkways, what they look like in the triangle parks, if, if for whatever reason they wanted to put one there. And, and just build in the ability to, to really make sure that these are done in a way that, that is in keeping with the historic designation of the village.
I suspect we have unanimity in wanting that.
Yes.
And I, and I was at the preservation meeting this last time when we talked through it. And again, I think that that's a great preservation protector in that group for us, right? Because again, they're going to have, maybe in the cell providers are going to want to put them in the most economical locations. And that's going to be in the front parkways where we don't want them, right? And where it's going to conflict with our landmark designation. And if you go around to some of the villages that they're already deploying these, they're putting them right on the streetlights, a little tower right up off the top of that, about 10 feet tall up of two, three poles in the neighborhoods. And they, they look pretty hideous. In the language there, if you are historically, there is, there is language in the state, correct me if I'm right, about having landmark status. So we do have a different position than most do.
Yes.
Right? Again, on the down, the other side of this thing that we talked about at preservation, 5G is something that all of our families want, right? So again, we have to figure out a way to make this happen. We can't just say absolutely not. Plus, we can't because of the law.
Yep.
So trying to figure out a good way to make this happen on the back property lines where we already have kind of communication chaos back there is probably our best position to take.
Right. So why would we, why would we approve something like this in an unfinished state? What's the?
Well, this, no, so this is the zoning changes, right? So this is, to make them special uses, this only deals with private property. And what we're talking about now are additional protections for the, for the public right-of-ways. And, and this gives you the best control on private property because in each case, they're going to be a special use. They're going to go to PCC, have the ability to do an individual review of exactly what they're proposing, what the design is, and to impose conditions on it. Say, no, we, we're not going to allow it to be at that particular location on the private property. We're not going to allow it to look like that. It has to look a different way, or we're not going to approve it. So, so this, this is giving you additional control.
Why wouldn't we wait till the whole thing is together?
Because if somebody came along and wanted to put one on private property now and you didn't have this in place, it wouldn't be a special use necessarily. Necessarily.
And I just would interject that Attorney Mars is, as usual, is being modest. I mean, he has really become quite the subject matter expert in this field. A lot of people turn to him. And he has been very involved in this process to make sure that we have maximized the protections that we can get under the law. So he's done some very work on this. Is there further discussion? Please call the roll. Mr. Mars, did you have something?
Oh, just a couple of caveats on the, on the amendments that we do do coming forward on the historic preservation review. A couple of things I think are important is, one, I think, in order to comply with kind of the, the new FCC regulations and with the existing law, that we should probably impose that same review for, for all utility installations in our, in our right-of-way, not just the small cell. Because that, we don't want to give them any grounds to challenge it. And second of all, I wanted to make everyone aware that the FCC regulations are decreasing further the timelines that we have to review these. So Preservation Commission is going to need to make sure that they are.
It took like 60 days out of both of those caveats, right?
Right. So they, they bumped everything down an additional 30 days. So new installations on existing poles are now going to be 60. New poles are going to be 90. Which is still sufficient time for HPC review. We just have to make sure that we move the process along. All right? Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is a, and I mean, let me just reiterate what I said, not only with regard to Attorney Mars, but also the planning and zoning commission. Preservation really have done excellent work on this. And this, this is something that can, could really could affect any area anywhere within our town. And so I appreciate the work that our staff and our commissions have done to make sure that we have the maximum protection available for our residents. Next up is a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute the Groveland Levy Assessment of Non-Federal Sponsors Real Estate Acquisition Capability relative to the Groveland Avenue Levy Project. And that really is a title, if you can believe it. Manager Francis?
So just to summarize, we began discussing the Groveland Avenue Levy Flood Risk Management Project on April 5. Since then, we've been discussing the various modeling, updating information and reporting on our village website. At the July 19th, or 19th meeting, the board approved a resolution authorizing myself to sign off on the financial self-certification form. This additional form is required even in advance of the project partnership agreement. This, once again, does not commit the village to moving forward with the project. However, it is a necessary document if we choose to move forward. And also, the next steps with regard to review and discussion of this particular project are review and discussion of, and potential board action relative to the project partnership agreement. And then also an intergovernmental agreement with MWRD, also known as Metropolitan Water Reclamation District for funding the local share, which is the non-federal portion.
Okay, before we discuss, I'd ask for a motion to approve the resolution.
So.
By Mr. Lumsden. Second by Mr. Pollak. Sir, you had a comment, please?
It's been many a day since I've been before this board. My name is John Mack. I'm the president of the Hoffman Dam River Rats. We were the grassroots group that started the notching of the Hoffman Dam project. So for any of you that were here in 1996, that was when that was first proposed in front of this board. And I would like to make some comments on this Groveland levy. And I have a statement I'd like to read, and then if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them if I can. "To the village of Riverside, do not authorize the Army Corps of Engineers to build the flood control project without further study and input from all interested citizens. The problem is not the Groveland Avenue levy, it's the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Bridge. There is a solution to the problem of the restricted water flow at the bridge that does not require building a new bridge or shutting down rail traffic. Correcting the bridge problem can be accomplished without condemning any private property or altering the appearance of the village of Riverside. I do not believe that the Army Corps of Engineers has considered all the possible ways to solve the Groveland-Lincoln-Kimbark Road flooding problem. The cookie cutter plan for this flood wall was transferred to Riverside from the design of the walls built upstream on the Des Plaines River. The building of walls and dikes is 1930s, 1940s technology. The new concept of giving the river an adequate sized channel so it does not back up and cause flooding makes more sense. This can be done by reconstructing the west bank of the river between Forest Road and the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Bridge and about 60 feet downstream of the bridge. By rebuilding the west bank and utilizing the full float capacity the present bridge allows, the backup of water can be reduced to eliminate flooding. Alternate plans developed with citizen input should be given equal consideration by the Army Corps and the MWRD. It is very important for the residents and village officials of Riverside to have maximum input in this project. The residents of Riverside and are the people who will be most affected for the longest time by this project. Thank you, John Mack, President, Hoffman Dam River Rats." Does anyone have any questions or anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Anyone question for Mr. Mack?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Other comments or discussion on this item?
I have a question.
Please.
It seems like we have several layers of like the process that we go through. We're approving something tonight, potentially that's not, it's not the final thing. I've heard it from a few residents that they're a little confused about the process. Is there any place they can go to find out how the process works, like from beginning to end, and where we are in that stage? Like what step we're at?
I can work with the Army Corps to kind of finalize the process. It seems like these little pieces seem to come up as we're going through the project partnership agreement. And so I think procedurally, some things have probably changed with the Army Corps of Engineers. And so they're realizing it as their legal department is working with us on these variables. But as best as I can, I will put something together based on their feedback. Like I said, there's a couple of different layers, because we're working with not only Army Corps of Engineers, but the funding component is MWRD. And so there are certain things not only we need to approve with the Army Corps of Engineers, but also if we don't have the funding with MWRD, we really can't conceivably move forward with this project.
Let's just pick up on that. I mean, I think that's a really good idea to put together a timeline that we can post on the websites, so people can see exactly where we are in the process. I mean, I can tell you that, that right now, there, there are really two things kind of happening in parallel, as, as Manager Francis just said. The, the Army Corps is reviewing the comments and our, and suggestions from our legal staff with regard to the, the project partnership agreement. And we're also, at the same time, we're working with MWRD to finalize the intergovernmental agreement. So these are, these are two very difficult documents. And, and of course, we're dealing with two large bureaucracies that can be glacier-like in their, in their movement. But, but that, that's really what's going on right now. Just to reiterate what Manager Francis said in her comments about what we're doing tonight, this really is kind of a pro forma document that just allows us to get to the point where we could even consider the, the project partnership agreement. Neither the stock document nor the project partnership agreement commits the village to final construction. So a lot of the concerns, like the ones that Mr. Mack mentioned, I know that the Army Corps and, and our, our engineers have addressed this wetland aspect before. They've also discussed the, the, the effect that the, the railroad reconstruction of the bridge would have. So these, these are issues that, that have been touched on already. But as we go through the process, as we approach the, the, the project partnership agreement, more of those questions will be answered. And unfortunately, this is one of those kind of chicken and egg situations where some of the concerns that, that we all have about this project can't really be answered until we get into the design and construction phase, or the design and engineering phase, I should say. So that's kind of where we are right now. But we will work to put a, a timeline together and have it on our, we, we have a designated page on the village website specifically on this topic that, that residents can go to and always have the most current, up-to-date information at that page.
And as we get questions or information, whether it's from questions from our residents, I know Peter had submitted some questions that we're working with our engineer to address those, but also I want responses from Army Corps so that we have both of them to post to the public with regard to that. So as we're getting this information and the questions and inquiries and pushing that back, that information back out to residents, we're, we're kind of doing all of these pieces simultaneously as best as we can with the staffing that we have. So we do have a tentative schedule related to if it were to, if we were to build the levy, they have come up with a tentative timeline that we've posted on the website and we have out there. But in addition to the, just the PPA agree, that agreement, I'll try to come up with something with Army Corps of Engineers and work with MWRD to, to have something for residents to see as well.
I mean, right now, we're, we're waiting on the Army Corps to get back to us on our, our suggested changes on the, the partnership agreement. We were hoping to have that for the board's review by the November 1 meeting. I, I'm starting to think that that probably is not going to happen. It might be the second meeting or even the December meeting. I know that the Colonel who's in charge of the, the Army Corps in this area would like to be here to answer questions from the, the board and from residents. But I do, I do want to, just to reiterate to everyone, I mean, the concern here obviously is to try to reduce flooding as it affects a large segment of our, of our, our population. But we are, everyone up here and everybody on our staff is dedicated to being careful and making sure that this project is properly vetted and has the maximum input put from our residents, is properly reviewed by our engineers as an independent and objective review body. So nothing is going to be done without careful, careful review and analysis. I can assure you of that. So any other, yes, sir?
Two questions. So, well, one statement. So basically, what you've said in a nutshell is what we hear, what we do here tonight obligates the village to absolutely nothing. It's just, it's just movement of the process in order for us to get answers. So we're not obligated to anything. Second thing is, is we are spending a lot of money and time of our, both our legal and our engineering. Is any of that funds recoupable from MWRD or the Army Corps?
I don't believe so. That's one of the things that we're discussing right now with MWRD is exactly what, what their funding would be applied to. We're dealing with some kind of boilerplate language that was given to us. So Attorney Mars now has gone back and is working with them to clarify exactly what the nature and extent of their, their funding is going to be and what the actual dollar amount is going to be. But as things stand right now, I think the answer to that question is no. Mr. Mars, is that correct?
Well, I think it's important for us, at least from a, from our standpoint, is to keep track of those fees so we know exactly where this is, what this is costing us and maybe when we decide to, you know, move ahead or pull back.
Anything else from this side? Yes, ma'am, please. Yes, I'm sorry.
Cathy Flaherty, 215 Maplewood. At what point in this process, because I, you know, when you're talking about eminent domain and, you know, taking over people's property, at what point in this process will that be made known to the residents?
Do you want me to take a stab at that? Or would you like to answer it, Mr. Mars? Let me try to take a stab. Ideally, never would that ever come into play. I know you were seeing that in this document that we have here tonight. But what this, all this document is saying is that in the unfortunate, untoward circumstance that something like that had to be done, it would be the village's responsibility to do it. This basically is the Army Corps saying, that is a power that belongs to the village and not to the federal government. So it is my anticipation that that, that that issue will never come up. It is, of course, a power that municipalities have. But I would not, I would not let the appearance of those words in this document be of concern because this, it is nothing, it is not contemplated at all by this board.
Okay, even just going back to the meeting that we had with Scott from the Army Corps of Engineers, and when he talked about putting the levy on Park Place, that will be very close to people's property. So I, I'm, I'm kind of confused when you say that never, because it looks like if that levy is built on Park Place, it will definitely infringe on people's property.
That, that is one of the questions I can't answer at this point, because we won't, we won't know the exact placement and the exact dimensions and measurements of those kind of things until we get into the, the engineering and design phase. I mean, one of the things that we have made clear to the Army Corps is that this board's not making any decisions until we know exactly where these, these structures would be, how tall they would be, how they would look from the standpoint of the village and from residents that are affected by it. So those, those are all questions that we all have and that we all will get answers to. to. It's just that we aren't that far enough along the process to have that information yet.
Okay, and at that point, it will be open to public discussion?
Everything is going to be open to public discussion.
Okay.
Yes.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Flaherty. Anything else? Please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Sedgley.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have no considerations? Does anyone have any new business? We do have need for an executive session this evening to discuss the setting of a price for lease of village property, so I'd ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to reconvene, no final action will be taken. Motion by Mr. Lumsden.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballerine. Please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Sedgley.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Means adjourned. Thank you and good night.